Well, very good. It looks like we have a quorum now, so I'm gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Lexi Wellitt, and this is a City of Tucson Planning and Planning Commission meeting. I'm the Chair of the Commission, and the responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council, and the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Cassidy. Chair Wellitt.
Present.
Commissioners Zegir.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Pafford.
Here.
Commissioner Young. Vice Chair Ortiz-Pino.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Warrache. Commissioner McCantsy.
Present.
Commissioner Kinney. And Commissioner Lambo.
Here.
Let the record reflect that there is a quorum present.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Struve. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes and legal action report. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Chair Wellitt, I think there's a typo in the first, under number two, the first two words. Chair's misspelled, and so is Chair Cassidy. With that, I'll recommend approval of the minutes.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing no nays, looks like the motion passes there. Next agenda, or item on the agenda, is the Major Streets and Routes Plan Amendment. Would staff please provide a presentation for item number three?
Yes, excuse me, I apologize to interrupt. I'm attempting to join by video, but it says it's stopped by host, so I'm not able to turn on the video. Is that something that can be addressed on your end?
Yes, Commissioner Pafford, we're looking into that right now.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Thank you. Carry on.
Great, Mr. Beal. I think it's, the floor is yours for a presentation there.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Beal with the Entitlements Section of Plan and Development Services. In this evening, we have the public hearing, and where staff will present for the major change to the major streets and routes. One second while we pull it up.
We appreciate all of your patience as we embark on our first hybrid meeting as a planning commission with video and presentations.
So we have the major change, or the change to the Major Streets and Routes map, and it's an amendment to remove the future West Gorey Road from Pad 30, Pad 43. And as the map demonstrates, the future right-of-way for Gorey Road runs from the Santa Cruz River through Pad 43, the Prince Ten Pad, and out to the I-10 freeway. And the proposal is to eliminate the future arterial road from the MSNR and to enable the developer to develop the Pad 10 unencumbered. So there was a neighborhood meeting held on January 10th. There were four members of the public attended, and the primary questions that came up were about access to, for the Prince of Tucson RV Park just to the east of La Choya Boulevard. And staff reached out to the city's real estate department, were in contact with them, and those things were addressed as far as how access would work, and that's really the primary role of the developer and that RV park to work that out for this. The actual MSNR is, will still, is not gonna take away any access. So the Prince Ten Pad, actually, the major, this was reviewed when it was first adopted, that it was identified that the, through transportation, that they would need to remove Gorey Road, you know, from the major streets and routes. But at that time, during the review process, it was determined that there was gonna be a future update to the MSNR, so they thought it would be best to hold and do everything together at once. However, that's gonna take a little longer for that update, and the applicant is working with real estate right now to try to acquire some right-of-way in order to create a circulation road system for their development. So, we worked with DTM, and they suggested, as well as PDSD, that it would be more appropriate to take care of this one item of the future right-of-way at this time. And as you can see, the, again, how the pad is laid out, if it's gonna be laid out for some commercial development and some industrial, light industrial, and there are a bunch of different building blocks, and the Gorey Road goes right through that, which would really make it very hard to develop. So, sorry about that. So the, what the, so staff reached out to DTM for their support to see what they thought about the amendment, and they support the proposal as that currently they do not have any plans to extend and build out that future right-of-way of Gorey Road. And the primary reason is that for Gorey Road to go across the Santa Cruz River, there would need to be a bridge built, and that's not in the plans at this time. So the, besides the support from DTM, Plan Tucson had, supports this amendment and the development of the Prince Ten Pad of having a mixed-use high development along this urban area, particularly affronting I-10. Santa Cruz Area Plan also called out in their map that there would be more intense private development in this particular area around Fort Lowell Road and on I-10. And so, and then again, the Prince Ten Pad being adopted by Mayor and Council supports, that Mayor and Council supported this development. So in summary, for the change and update to the Major Streets and Routes map to remove Gorey Road, the creation of a private roadway network within the Prince Ten Pad aligns with Plan Tucson goals and policies to promote economic development through a shovel-ready site. The Santa Cruz Area Plan recognizes a need for private mixed-use development in this area, along Interstate 10 and also along the Loop. And then the Prince Ten Pad, as adopted by Mayor and Council, identifies the need for future potential of a private roadway network for the development of this pad. And then again, there is support from the Department of Transportation and Mobility. They have no objection to the proposed amendment, as this current segment of West Gorey Road, it currently doesn't exist, although it's designated as a future arterial road, and there are no plans by DTM to build out this future right-of-way. So that ends staff's report. If there are any questions, staff can answer those.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Beal. I appreciate your presentation. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any questions for staff? No? Okay.
So I just wanna point out that staff recommends that the planning commission for this as an amendment, as approval to Mayor and Council.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to members of the public who would like to speak on this item. In general, there's a three-to-five-minute time limit on this, which can be extended if we need to. Members of the commission may ask questions of the speakers, but we do not, or we do ask that each speaker be timely, as we want to make sure those who like to be heard have an opportunity. We have not had any people who have requested to speak on this item at this time, so if anyone would like to speak related to the Major Streets and Routes Plan Amendment, you may do so at this time by either getting up in the public here or raising your hand virtually online. Seeing no one jump up here, or hands a-waving, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing nay or none? At this time, it appears that the commission has recommended that the recommendation as presented by staff move forward to Mayor and Council.
I believe we have to make a motion to...
Oh, we just closed the hearing? Oh, sorry. My bad. So, at this time, if we need to have a general discussion about the item, I would entertain a motion for what the commission's pleasure is.
I'll make a motion that we recommend this to Mayor and Council, recommend to approval. I'm sorry, I didn't read the, recommend approval of this modification to the MSNR to Mayor and Council.
So now it appears that we have a motion, and it's second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing no nays, the motion passes there to recommend this to Mayor and Council. At this time, I have to recuse myself from the hearing, so Vice Chair Chris Ortiz-Pino, have a wonderful evening, and thank you all so much for having me tonight.
Find the next piece in the script here. Okay, I'd like to call item number four, Rincon Southeast Regional Plan Amendment, public hearing. Would staff please provide their presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Samuel Paz, Lead Planner with Entitlements. I'll provide you the summary this evening. So this is a Plan Amendment to the Rincon Southeast Regional Plan, Amendment to Map Detail Number Four, Number Eight, and Creation of the Special Area Policies. So some contexts. So, I'll go over the map briefly to kind of orient yourself. So the areas in brown are the extents of the Rincon Southeast Subregional Plan. The areas in question for the Plan Amendment are highlighted in green and pink. The green area is Map Detail Number Eight, and the pink area is Map Detail Number Four. The area that's hatched that covers both Map Details is the Special Area Policies. The applicant for this Plan Amendment request is the Arizona State Land Department. The amendment sites combined equal 8,300 acres. They're generally located south of Interstate 10 and east of Willmont Road. The consultant team is comprised of Lazarus and Sylvan, the Planning Center in Somas. Additionally, their neighborhood meeting was held April 11th, virtually, about 25 residents participated. Again, this Plan Amendment request could be seen as a two-pronged approach, the first being the land use amendments, and then the second being the creation of the Special Area Policies. From the land use perspective, they're gonna be, Map Detail Number Four, amends low-intensity rural, LIR, to urban-industrial. Map Detail Number Four also amends medium-intensity rural to medium-intensity, medium-high-intensity urban. Map Detail Number Eight amends low-intensity rural, LIR, to medium intense, and, excuse me, and medium-intensity rural to medium-high-intensity urban. From the Special Area Policies, the proposed Plan Amendment creates a new special policy to address broader floodplain constraints and issues for the State Land Department within the Southlands area. The Special Area Policies provide flexibility of environmental systems with oversight, the entitlement, and secondary review process. A bigger step back, so this is a map highlighting the numerous studies that have occurred in this area for the last 30 years. You'll see numerous colors representing habitat modeling, riparian, wash corridors, numerous studies in these areas. Also, for the last 30 years, the city has developed numerous policies relating to floodplains. And so, to sum up, the Plan Amendment is looking for flexibility in developing from a land use and floodplain perspective. This Plan Amendment request is also within the Southlands Building Block, as identified in Plan Tucson. The Southlands is defined as long-term growth areas, form predominated by large tracts of land along the southern perimeter of the cities. A large portion of this area is administered by the Arizona State Land Department. Prior to releasing these lands for development, the state will initiate planning efforts to promote early-phase development that reflects sustainable and innovative community design. Numerous policies within Plan Tucson support master planning, community-level solutions, and reflecting the sensitivity of the environment. Per the Special Area Policies, the City of Tucson and the State Land Department act as a supervisory role to ensure that the development complies with the initial entitlements. Upon sale of the property, the purchaser undertakes secondary planning efforts, and as a result, the Special Area Policy embeds the review of the Stormwater Technical Advisory Committee stack within the entitlement process by establishing review criteria and the review of findings of floodplain-related studies at the secondary planning stage. So if you look at, really, the flow chart of entitlements, you'll see that STACK is involved at the initial planning and entitlement stage. They're also involved in the secondary planning stage when we're looking at studies and, you know, studies and regarding floodplains and stuff like that. So lastly, staff recommends the planning commission approve a motion to forward the proposed Plan Amendments to the Mayor and Council to change Map Detail Number Four and Number Eight to allow urban-industrial and medium-high-intensity urban, and to create the Special Policy Areas 1-05. That's all I have this evening.
All right. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
I do. Then you sent out some exhibits, some hydrology exhibits after the last meeting. So I was looking at them, and I wasn't sure, it's two and three, and the, but the area north of the fairgrounds, a whole lot of areas not in the floodplain anymore, but it doesn't look like the channel. The channel's way down here, and there's a significantly reduced floodplain area. Didn't quite make sense to me, but...
Yeah, no. Commissioner Martin, I think the applicant might be best responding to that to be able to address your question.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, just sort of for staff, just a process question. Did this go to the county for review or recommendation?
Yes, as part of the amendment process and rezonings, but we would, we would send it out to all reviewers, and the county was part of the review process, you know, and part of the review for, we sent out the floodplain as well, as well as the city's engineering staff as well.
Okay, thanks. I have a question.
Real quickly, just for the Commissioners, we're hearing from the back that we're not quite hearing you enough. Maybe just, may need to speak a little bit more into the mic.
Is this better?
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
So, my question has to do with the statement, "Upon sale, purchaser undertakes secondary planning efforts." I just wanted to understand exactly what that means, like if they've bought, like if they've already bought it, and secondary planning shows, for example, that proper drainage or the other riparian or vegetation or whatever cannot be, you know, provided for, do they then have no recourse with their purchase? Or could you just elaborate on that statement for me?
Commissioner McCantsy, I think, I'll answer partially about process, but I think the applicant probably would, with the state land and the consultants, might be able to give you a better answer, or more clear for, to address that concern or question. But as far as the entitlement process for the rezoning for a planned community development, the initial process will be, the applicant would be working to develop, which would be the state land and the applicant, and their consultant, writing up the PCD, which would provide the criteria and the development standards on how to address basically development out there, which would also include how to address any of the drainage washes or riparian areas, and create a criteria. Then when the, that land does get auctioned off, and it comes back in at the time to develop, the actual who's ever purchased that would then come back and then provide some more secondary, what we call secondary planning that's built into this entitlement for the planned community development, and provide the additional studies that were raised or required by that PCD, which could address more drainage or traffic or riparian areas. So there'd be more studies that would be done, and more review to see again how, what can or can't be developed as it starts to get out more development. But I'll let, again, the applicant comment more on that.
Great. Thank you. All right, so I think it's appropriate for the applicant to answer some questions, and to have a presentation.
Where do I point it? Okay. Okay.
Good evening. Carrie Sylvan with Lazarus and Sylvan, representing the Arizona State Land Department. With me this evening as well are Karen Data with the State Land Department. She's the Assistant Director of the Real Estate Division. Brian Underwood with the Planning Center, and then John Oliver is here with Somas as well to answer the, some of the floodplain questions. So we're excited to be here tonight. This is a real opportunity, we mentioned this during the study session, that this is an opportunity for economic development in an area of our region where we've established that as a priority with the Snorr and Corridor Extension, but also able to balance some of the floodplain management and wildlife corridors and enhancements as well. Part of the reason this is so exciting is because we don't have very many large pieces of, large areas that are owned by a single owner, with the ability to have some of this, some of this management that we've built in relative to PAD, PCDs, and secondary planning. So what I'm gonna do is a little bit of how state land kind of works, and I'll try to answer that public auction question, and whether or not people are gonna get stuck with something, which they won't. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Brian to highlight some stuff, and then Mr. Oliver will be able to answer, I think, some of the floodplain mapping questions that Mr. Martin brought up. Click. There you go. Staff has already touched on this. This is the Southlands area. As I said before, it's an area that's ripe for development. It's unique in that there's a single ownership, a single owner in the area. What Plan Tucson says is this needs to be master-planned, and what we also know is that there's a number of studies that don't necessarily reflect current priorities for this area, nor the current conditions. And so that's a lot of what we're, what we're doing tonight is reflective of the need to update in this area and master-plan it. I mentioned this during the study session, but state land is, was set aside by the federal government at statehood, and it's to help fund our state's essential public services. So the State Land Department was created to manage these lands on behalf of trustees, of beneficiaries as the trustee. State Land Department is the trustee of over nine million acres throughout the state, and again, there's 13 beneficiaries, primarily the education system. There's a significant amount of state land and all communities in Arizona, but particularly southern Arizona is starting to grow into those state lands. And so, like I said, it gives us this opportunity to master-plan. One of the things to keep in mind on this map is that the blue is state land, the white is private land. So really, the white and the blue together are the only opportunities in the state of Arizona for economic development. The rest are federal and other governmental lands. Again, it was set aside, it's statehood, constitution, and the statutes govern how we manage. State land is not public land. That is a common misperception. It's not set aside as open space. It really is an asset that through lease or sale provides revenues to the beneficiaries. And in that vein, it acts more like a private property owner, or like private property than it does public land. As trustee, State Land Department's job is to manage it, to generate income for those beneficiaries. You've seen the next two slides, which just highlights the very happy beneficiaries of the state land. Again, it's predominantly K through 12, eight of the 9.2 million acres is K through 12, and then there's a number of other beneficiaries, including the three universities. Uh-oh. Did I hit the wrong? No, there we go. Okay. So, state lands need to, have to be sold at for fair market value. There's an appraisal process and an approval process. Any sale or lease of over 10 years must occur at a public auction. Every dollar goes to the trust to benefit the beneficiaries, and actually, every acre of every parcel of property that is state land is tied to a specific beneficiary. The State Land Department is a general fund agency and partners with local governments for land planning and entitlements, which is exactly what we've done here. One of the things I wanna point out during the auction process, and this goes to Commissioner McCantsy's question, is that whether state land is the entity that does the PAD or the PCD, which is the next phase, or it's in partnership with somebody who has gone through the auction, or the auction occurs after, all of the landowners that participate in this will have done their due diligence. All of these policies and the plans will have articulated what's appropriate for that, that, that part of the process, and know that they have to do a lot of these reports, and the goal here, again, is to create those riparian areas to make sure that there's off-site and onsite mitigation going on. So they'll be fully aware of everything that they're getting themselves into with this project and with the property. And that's partly the city and state land will be working with those end-users. So, as I said before, this was a real opportunity for the city and the state land to partner together, and we identified very early on, when we started this a few years ago, some significant mutual goals. We already talked about economic development. This is a large area owned by a single property, lots of opportunity to create, to create, create opportunities for economic development in this area. The second is flood control. This allows us, based on some of those prior studies and consolidating all of this, to be able to consolidate those broad shallow sheet flows into manageable corridors and allow some of these larger areas for lower infrastructure costs and flooding. It also gives us the opportunity, and we've done this in H2K, which is another PAD that we worked on, and a few other, in Atterbury Trails, where we're utilizing those enhanced flow corridors as we establish them for the wildlife corridors, and to really channel the water so that we can have some robust riparian areas and native vegetation. So those are the three kind of goals, and you'll see that all of those special... And you'll see that all of those special area policies reflect those goals. I am going to turn this over to Brian and John to finish it off.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Brian Underwood and I'm with the Planning Center. And I'll be taking you through some of the finer points of our amendment once again. So, you know, as, as Mr. Paz alluded to, you know, that this is quite a large expansive plan. It was carried over from the county's 1992 comprehensive plan for a massive 410 square mile area there that you see on the cover of the Rincon Southeast Subregional Plan. And a lot of what's in this plan is no longer reflective of current development trends and drainage patterns, particularly in the area for this, for this amendment west of I-10. But it, you know, it, it also consists of a lot of antiquated land use policy and direction that is in conflict or redundant with existing city codes and ordinances. And that's really for a lot of the subregional policies that are, that are within the document. And that's because a lot of the regulation, the policy that's, that's within the Rincon Southeast Subregional Plan predated a lot of what's in the code now when it was adopted back in 1995 here. And it's been quite a while since the Rincon Southeast Subregional Plan was touched, about 20 years. And the last amendment was for housing and the Vale substation, so more of an industrial use, both of which were in one of the map details that we're proposing to amend currently. So here it's, it's a little easier to see how expansive this plan is, stretching all the way as you can see to the Soro National Park boundary and all the way over to the Cochise County line over on the east side. And what's significant about this is that there's no land use guidance, guidance for much of the plan area. Anything that, you know, is, is sort of east of the blue area there doesn't, doesn't have those, those map details. And even west of us, the area outlined in blue there, anything that's outlined in blue, but not with it, with that blue fill color is what's owned by state trust or by the State Land Department. It's state trust land that doesn't have any, any land use guidance because it's not within any of those map details in the plan. So as it's been said, it's about 8,300 acres of contiguous land for, for the Rita 10 area here. And the reason why that's well positioned for major employers, you know, seeking large tracts of land is because it's next to, as, as Carrie mentioned, a major state land department rezoning for major employment and industry, the H2K rezoning on the east side of I-10. And it's close to the tech park, as you can see there with the U of A symbol, the airport, the Port of Tucson for rail access and distribution. It's also conveniently, conveniently located off of the interstate and, and then has the future Snorr and Corridor Limited Access Interstate Connector from Sarita to the Rita Road exit there coming straight through it. And it's also close to ample power facilities with the Vale substation right there smack dab in the middle of it. It's also close to new water and sewer infrastructure upgrades made by the City of Tucson and Pima County. And those were for the Southeast Employment and Logistics Center that surrounds the fairgrounds there. So they made some utility upgrades and made some drainage improvements as well in, in the area surrounding, surrounding the fairgrounds there. And, and basically because Rita 10 is so optimally located here for, from a logistics standpoint, it, it makes a lot of sense for this to be the jumping off point for, for the State Land Department to start their master planning within the entirety of the Southlands there. So this is just a brief overview of our proposed amendments to the RSSP, which I'll get into more detail on in subsequent slides. But at a high level, what we're doing is we're proposing to change the land use designations for the state trust land within map details four and eight. That's it. And all other state trust land within the Southlands. As I mentioned, all that other land that's outlined in the blue on those previous maps doesn't have any, any, it's not within any map details. So it wouldn't require any future amendments to the RSSP. So this will be the last, the last one here. And then because the Rita 10 property covers part of two different map details, four and eight, we are also proposing the special area policy that Mr. Paz alluded to, which would only apply to the state trust land within those two map details. And what that does is it allows the State Land Department to blend the zones and the land uses allowed within each of the designations, the E and the I. And, and that will allow for greater flexibility in the mixing of industrial uses to make sure that as large industry comes in, it can be sustained with other support uses like housing, commercial, office, retail and services and other smaller, you know, support industry as well. And it also allows ASLD to analyze and propose the consolidation of the really wide but shallow sheet flow areas that cross this area here. And what those do is, you know, as, as it's been said, is they severely limit the area's development potential. And they could be modified to follow the areas with the greatest flow potential during a hundred year storm event to create those healthier, more defined and connected wildlife, wildlife corridor areas. And again, this would be the same approach taken by Pima County through the fairgrounds for the Salk and also employed for the H2K pad on the other side of I-10, which is, you know, the, the tributary side, the downstream side of, or upstream side, excuse me, of, of some of these, these floodplains that we're dealing with here on the west side of I-10. And basically the takeaway here is that a lot more analysis needs to be done and is required as part of the policy language in this amendment and will come through the PAD PCD and the secondary planning process. So diving into the, the actual map details themselves, as you can see on, on map detail four, we're proposing to focus that medium, high intensity urban, the blue area up along Interstate 10, consistent with interstate commerce and also what's, what's been proposed in H2K. And then we're designating the land, all the rest of, of map detail four here as industrial. So all of that land that, you know, is adjacent to the fairgrounds and what Pima County has planned and closer to the prisons is designated as industrial there. And then you see some of those outliers, the remnant LIR pieces that remain scattered throughout there. And those are more of a utility nature because you have, you know, El Paso Natural Gas that owns one of those squares, Pima County Sheriff's Training and Shooting Range, and there's some City of Tucson well sites as well. And then lastly, on this map, we've realigned the resource conservation areas based on, on new floodplain analyses that have happened since, since the plan was adopted here. And then for map detail eight, similarly, again, it focuses that E designation up along Interstate 10 and adjacent on the other side of the H2K development. And then again, realigns those resource conservation areas to be consistent with newer floodplain studies. So diving into the special area map, this is where, you know, we, we really, you know, made some changes to make it specific to the State Land Department. And so any of, of the holdings, any of the state trust land, the special area policy applies just to, just to that. And it's again, how we blend those E and I designations by adding policy to allow some overlap on the zoning districts permitted in each one. So it will allow the C3, the I1, the I2 in the, in the MHIU designation. And then vice versa, anything in the industrial will be allowed in, or anything in the E will be allowed in the I. It also allows for those potential enhancements to the shallow sheet flow floodplain areas through the future PAD PCD process and the secondary planning. And I'll go into that in a bit more detail on this overall process. Since we're very early on, this is the first step in a multi-step process for, for the land to develop down here. But basically during this plan amendment, we're just, you know, laying the foundation for the future studies and entitlement efforts that will come later. Next will be that pad or PCD rezoning. And that will really establish the rights to develop certain permitted uses. It'll create specific development regulations and it'll initiate preliminary studies for access utilities, drainage and everything else that will be needed after, after the rezoning. So this is really where the value gets added to the property and allows ASLD to start marketing it for sale, put it up for auction. So for the land sale, that, that state land is packaged into development units. And based on the, and those development units are basically sized based on an end user's needs, whatever they're, they're looking to purchase there. And it's sold at auction, which is basically an applicant driven process. Someone is coming to state land, you know, saying that they're interested in a, in a, in a particular piece of land there. During the secondary planning process, the purchaser or winning bidder must then complete any of those secondary planning efforts identified through the plan amendment and the rezoning processes. So it's kind of that layered approach, right? And this usually includes your more detailed plans for development, including exact building sizes and locations, access and roadway improvements, drainage, grading, you know, you name it. And since there's finally a specific proposal, once an end user is, is involved, you can kind of get into those details there. And from there, it's, it's securing the necessary permits and approvals and constructing the project. But probably the, the most important part throughout all of this is that state, the State Land Department, they stay in the, in the driver's seat, they stay involved in what is happening within each of those development units up until the final, you know, piece of land is sold down there in the Southland. So they have some, some involvement and some oversight to ensure that the vision, the plan for Rita 10 transpires the way, the way that they initially, initially thought about it. And with that, I will kick it over to John to answer a very pointed question. You had Commissioner Martin about the, the washes and the channels that we're proposing there. Thank you.
John Oliver, I don't know the specific exhibits, if you wouldn't mind showing them to me. I think I could answer them probably in general is that, you know, there's 12 or so different hydrologic hydraulic models that have been prepared in this area that we're using kind of in this preliminary planning effort stages. And so in these exhibits, the differences that you can see between floodplains is kind of dependent on the point of the exhibit. In this northern one with the least amount of floodplains, what you're seeing here is kind of a partial analysis where at some point during this process, you know, a goal was maybe to have the floodplain start here, these flow corridors that we're talking about, the consolidated areas. And so SOMAS took the, the flow rates, put a minimum model just here to look at what the existing flow depth velocities and such would be. The southern half here is kind of a planned future potential where we took an existing model through the fairgrounds that had been prepared for the county, put them through what our proposed flow corridors will look like. As opposed to the floodplains on this exhibit that you see that have much more extensive areas. This is a 2D flow model where it doesn't even necessarily mean there's 100 CFS or more, the regulatory flow value. This is just any flow depth whatsoever, based on the rain on grid model that was prepared. So that's why you see so much more existing quote unquote floodplain in this exhibit, not necessarily a regulatory flow. And I think the goal for this RSSP amendment is that, you know, it's not trying to depict what the floodplain is necessarily going to look like in the future other than being allowed to consolidate it into, you know, a wide shallow flow corridor that's only some depth to be defined later and agreed upon with the city and state such that, you know, you can create developable land rather than having 10 square miles of shallow sheet flood. You know, floodplain is completely undeveloped.
So I guess my question was, it doesn't appear that there's any constructed method to reduce the flows in that area north of the, north of the fairgrounds. So.
That is something that hasn't been defined yet. I think in the RSSP it talks about giving them, the developer, the state, the option of regional or onsite detention, retention. That's something that would.
It's just that the two exhibits didn't quite make sense because there's a lot more floodplain on the first exhibit two and exhibit three has less. But it doesn't look like that watershed is affected by any channel. So I, I don't know that it's, it just was odd to me to see that. So. I just, that was my question. So your answer's fine. I know it's going to go through further evaluation. But just having those exhibits did not, that makes sense to what I know about it. So.
Is the right time for more questions? First of all, I wanted to thank the, the folks that sent that additional information on my request from the last meeting. I appreciate that. I spent by the afternoon looking through all that, the drainage modeling and stuff. That was quite, quite interesting. This is, take this in the spirit of, you know, my learning more about how these development, you know, things work. But, you know, most of the locational advantages that you cited for this, this overall development have been present for a long time. So I guess my question is why, why now? I mean, it all seems really good for the city and the county and every, you know, all the whole region. But why now as opposed to like, you know, 10, 20 years ago? And then I'll have a follow-up question to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Chair, Commissioner McKenzie, members of the Commission. The reason why now is, is that it's, right now, the State Land Department is receiving interest in Tucson. And, and it's been quite some time since they've had, you know, major employers looking for large tracts of land focused down here. And so now, you know, is with, with, well, I should say about a year and a half, two years ago was actually the prime time when, you know, real estate market was, was where it needed to be as well. Yeah. And, and so we're a little bit, you know, past, past that, but there's still a lot of interest in the land down there. And, and that's why State Land is looking to position it for, for future growth.
So inquiries were coming to the ASLD and based upon that is that's why the timing is good.
That's correct. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. That's good. The other question, again, very general is, you know, we're, we're going to be doing overall drainage studies. And I, the one thing I picked up from the information you sent me is that drainage is sort of the critical sort of piece of getting this land developed for, for any good economic use, right? So we're going to, you know, a lot of overall drainage studies being done. But then, you know, the individual parcels are, are sold. Right. So how, who, who's paying for the work that's going to have to be done to make sure the drainage meets all the codes and standards that are ultimately going to be imposed on the developers? I mean, I kind of look at it as, you know, there's like this big drainage thing that has to be accomplished. And that's kind of the public, not the public, but the common area. And so everybody's who's going to be developing this property has got to pay into that common area development. Is that, is that the way it goes or no? Could you just explain how that works for me, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Chair, Commissioner McKenzie, members of the Commission. So the way it will work is, is dependent upon the, the size of that user, right? So if a large enough user comes in that is going to, you know, front load some of that infrastructure cost, then ideally that's, that's the best situation, right? If some smaller users were to come in, then likely the State Land Department would work with, you know, someone to craft an overall master agreement that says this is, this is how all of these things are going to transpire for the, you know, here's a master drainage report. Or, you know, when that drainage report is going to be done, then people will be paying back into that as they develop their property. And so it, it's really just a who goes first kind of thing. But certainly the, the infrastructure would be planned in a comprehensive manner to where every one of those developments, you know, pays their fair share for, for what goes in. Yeah. And it would be the developer paying that cost.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners of the Year.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So on the lines of Commissioner McKenzie, I have a question. So like this is a big opportunity for the state land and for the city of Tucson to bring in more business and jobs and development. But being such a large parcel, and we talked a lot, a lot about, you can tell by looking at the floodplain, and thanks for sending those maps. I enjoyed looking at them too, is that there's not going to be any master drainage plan until the part, somebody wants to buy the small parcels. I mean, doesn't that kind of start pushing the core, the cart ahead of the horse? Shouldn't there be at least some basic drainage plan rather than a bunch of little retention areas? Or, you know, there will be roads going through there. How is that going to affect the drainage and? How is that going to affect the drainage and is it? And I know that the roads are going to have to be square because in our, in Tucson, we like our nice square roads. But the question is, 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 is there a bigger overall drainage and floodplain plan and riparian area plan? For the area. That. The developers can look at and say, well, I want this parcel for that reason.
Excellent question. Chair Ortiz, Pino, Commissioners, Zegir, members of the commission. Yes, there, there will be an additional study that's done for the overall area as part of the, the pad or PCD process for Rita 10. And, and any other, you know, further entitlements for any other areas of state trust land there. So, so yes, there, there would be a more detailed drainage study that would come at the next step. And then that would again, set more criteria for more studies that would happen. At the secondary planning level, once a user is identified and the exact development area is, is known. And a full drainage report can be done at that point. And, and that's really where, you know, a discussion has to be made about, does that full drainage report? You know, encompass a larger area so that we're, we're doing the, the floodplain management in that area in a comprehensive way.
Commissioner Pafford, I think I see your hand up.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Is there a particular company or interest or developer that you know of at the moment that's interested in the area? That, um, that might benefit from these changes?
Chair Ortiz, Pino, Commissioner Pafford, members of the commission, there is currently not a user in tow that is, that is. Currently looking at the property. There have been a lot that have looked, but not currently on the hook.
Thank you.
Is it fair to say that the, there were the regulations and standards and everything around the, the overall drainage plan? Would, would likely be best met or most optimally met by selling fewer parcels to larger developers? As opposed to selling lots of small parcels. To small developers.
Chair Ortiz, Pino, Commissioner McCantsy, members of the commission. I can say that it's in the state land department's best interest to sell parcels of land that are 500 acres and above. Because those are, it's basically users that are looking for 500 to 2,000 acres are who have shown an interest in this area. And that's who state land department is, is pulling out for those, those larger, those larger users anyways.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, seeing no more questions or hands from the commission. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Your answers. I'd like to now open this up to a public hearing, the members of the public who would like to speak about this item. In general, there's a three to five minute timeline for each speaker. Can be extended at the discretion of the vice chair. We have not had any people who have requested to speak at this time, so if anyone liked to speak related to the recon southeast regional plan amendment, you may do so at this time. Seeing none? All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Wait here a second.
Second.
All right. I guess take a eyes for closing the public hearing.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, with that, I think a public hearing is closed. Let's see here. Any more general discussion before we look for a motion? Can we please get the motion back up on the screen so we can? See exactly what we're supposed to read? All right. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure.
To approve as presented. Recommend approval as presented of item number four. Proposed plan amendment to mayor and council to change map detail number four and number eight to allow. Urban industrial I and medium high density urban E and to create special policy one dash zero five.
Second. All right, all those in favor recommending this motion to the mayor and council, say aye.
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 All right, the motion passes. We have a favorable recommendation to the mayor and council. And. That is it for that item. I'd like to call the next item, number five, Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan Amendment Study Session. With staff, please provide their presentation.
Yes. Again, good evening, commissioners. My name is John Beal with the Planning Development Services. And tonight, I just wanted to go over real quick. The process, because this particular amendment is what we call is a concurrent plan amendment slash rezoning. And so part of that is to, that they would pair up a little bit better as they go through the process to provide. Not only policy information for the plan amendment, but also provide a little more detail for regarding the site plan. For the neighbors and, and the property owners surrounding the site. And so. The combined neighbor, so basically is a combined neighborhood meeting. Of the plan amendment and the rezoning, and that's held at least 30 days prior. There's a notice that's sent out 30 days prior to the neighborhood meeting. And that's where the applicant actually provides information on the, what's going to be proposed for the amendment and the language. And as well as providing information for the rezoning, particularly the preliminary development plan or site plan. So that people can see what's going to be developed there. The process after that neighborhood meeting is that the planning commission that, that comes to the planning commission for a study session. Then if planning commission makes a recommendation to set up for a public hearing, then the, then it will come back for a public hearing. And then typically, we've been trying to schedule shortly after the planning commission public hearing, set the time for the zoning examiner public hearing as well. Where the zoning examiner then makes a recommendation to mayor and council. And then they will try to marry these up so they go at the same time to mayor and council for, for approval or a vote on that. So you probably will start seeing a few more, because I think we have another one coming up later on this too. And they seem to be for these specific sites that actually have a, an actual project right in the works. It really seems to be very helpful. So again, this is an update to the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan. Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan, the location is actually on the east side of town. Typically, Tanca Verdi, Rice Town Road, Houghton Road and East Catalina Highway. And then the plan was adopted by mayor and council in 1984. There's been three plan amendments. Actually, one in 1988, one in 1993, and one in 2018. And all three of those plan amendments did center actually on the implementation techniques for community commercial, which is what we're here tonight for. And again, the, the parcels for the amendment are two parcels that are located just west of the Bear Canyon Tanca Verdi Road. You see there in the detail. And then this slide actually shows in yellow where the planet proposed plan amendment site is. You can see that the commercial center is really centered around Bear Canyon and Tanca Verdi Road. But I've also highlighted of some previous C2 rezoning cases that actually went through some amendments. As, because C2 is considered community commercial. The one amendment, C, or the rezoning, C98811 was for a tire store or shop. That was going to, if everything was going to be all enclosed, so it went through the amendment to include their language, which we're here today for, everything enclosed. The other rezoning was C99225, and that was actually for the commercial center. So the commercial center primarily was neighborhood commercial or C1. But the Bear Canyon Plan also recognized that there might be some need for more additional community commercial type uses. So the plan actually outlines some locational and design elements of where these kind of uses should be located. And what type of designs they should come in and for compatibility. So that one was basically for the overall shopping center, so they would have maybe a nursery or some outdoor storage. Then the more recent one was C91902, and that one came in before a break max store. And it was again, within that center, but it had to do with some adjustments to the setbacks from the scenic corridor and adjacent residential. Given the site configuration with, with the land and where it was already locked in. Again, you can see the, the site here outlined in yellow. And it's really nestled up next to the north where there is a self-storage center. And against to the east immediately is a commercial center, hardware store and a gas station. And across the street, some more commercial, you can see it a little better on this slide where it shows actually the zoning for C1. And then actually calling out the uses. So as I mentioned, the Bear Canyon ever plant has some implementation techniques and some design elements that are really. Specific for community commercial. And it's really to, to meet some additional retail and service needs in the area. It acknowledges that they should be located in a shopping center or area and how these uses should be. Oh, oriented more towards the interior or away from the residential. And it calls again for minimum building setbacks of 100 feet from the scenic route. Some more setbacks, a little greater from 350 feet from suburban and low density residential zone properties. As I mentioned before, it does call out about uses. Not, shouldn't be for outdoor storage or display, except where, as I mentioned before, for plant nurseries or home improvement. And then again, that one rezoning case for the tire shop also that came forward, it wanted everything enclosed and, and a roof structure. I should mention that the, the plan also talks about. Noise and about limiting the noise, so it has some policy for, for that, some policies for screening. And the uses from different residential and some areas. And it also requires that, you know, no, no billboards. So the request for the amendment. Is to modify the implementation technique 11G. And it were, where 11G calls out to completely. That a commercial, community commercial should be completely contained within an enclosed and rough structure, except as noted in E11, I mean, E, I mean, 11E above. And so the exception though, what will be the amendment language is the exception will be for these two parcels. That they're going to be exempt from implementation technique 11G. And are subject to the following, where all the uses associated with an express car wash are to be screened from adjacent properties and streets. By landscaping and decorative fencing or masonry wall, which is in alignment actually with the plan policies. Here is a, which is presented also at the neighborhood meeting is a preliminary development plan. And you can see that there, that this site will be surrounded by masonry walls. And some landscaping and some the water harvesting detention areas. The self-service car wash where the primary. Operation is will be located within that building and is be tucked closer to the more commercial, the self-storage. And be further away from Tanca Verdi. The outdoor areas where you can see the light shade blue will be where the vacuum service areas are for people to vacuum the cars out. There will also be the, any of the. Mechanical and the engines for those vacuums will be in an enclosed six foot wall enclosures for those to cut down the noise. And then there has been a greater setback from Tanca Verdi for more. A natural buffer area, which is part of the 30 foot scenic corridor requirement, as well as some additional. Landscaping in area and some walls and some fencing. There was a neighborhood meeting held on November 30th. And there was only one attendee that did show up, but that person did express support for the plan amendment and the rezoning. So in summary, the Bear Canyon every plan currently prohibits outdoor uses at the project location. The plan amendment allows the amended use at the site only, so the amendment is only for this particular site. So that policy 11G will still apply for anybody going anywhere else in that plan. And then the requested amendment will allow the applicant's proposal using typical Mr. Car Wash Design Language. The wash, the tunnel will be set in the back of the parcel with the entrance and exit oriented away from Tanca Verdi Road. And then the vacuum bay equipment and any will be contained and screened to limit noise and visual impact. There will be a kiosk where that will also be in that area. And so the proposal meets the setback requirements for Tanca Verdi Road. Incorporates a landscape buffer featuring water, rainwater harvesting features. And the proposal act will activate an otherwise vacant space and will integrate well with the other community. Commercial uses and the neighborhood commercial uses surrounding that intersection. And the proposal also meets all the other criteria that are outlined in the implementation techniques. This was the only, only one. So the recommendation from staff is that we recommend the planning commission set this item for a public hearing on April 17th, 2024. Then concludes staff's report. I'm glad to answer any questions. The applicant's also here as well to provide a, a presentation.
Oh, they go for. All right, the applicant, please provide their presentation.
I think I need to.
The commission can ask the staff questions.
Oh, is it off? Oh, it didn't sound like it was on. Good evening, everybody. I'm Linda Morales. I'm with the Planning Center.
I'm sorry, Linda, I skipped a section. We have.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of standing back.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Yeah, I did have one question. On the noise abatement, given the townhouses that are right there, a big townhouse development. Is there a decibel level that's going to have to be met or just going to assume that the six foot wall or whatever? And whatever is standard in a Mr. Car Wash Design is going to be sufficient?
There was a noise study that was with the design compatibility report with the decimal, which they would be, would be meeting. The city noise ordinance standards for that. The applicant might have a better idea of the actual decimal, but they would be meeting all the standards for that.
If the city has a standard that they're going to meet, that's, that's sufficient to me.
I, I actually had a question for staff as well. So the street classification for take verity is I'm guessing arterial?
That is correct. It's an art scenic arterial.
Okay, and what about Bear Canyon Road?
It would also be an arterial. The two arterial streets at that intersection.
Okay, without further ado.
All right. Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Linda Morales with the Planning Center. I am going to go through a lot of this fairly quickly because I don't want to be repetitive with what Mr. Beal presented, which was very comprehensive. But again, this is the site in red and we are just west, northwest of the intersection of Bear Canyon and Tanca Verdi. We have the Speedway Gas Station and Ace Hardware directly to the west or to the east, strikes the challenge today. And a family storage wraps around the site. And so that is also a nice mitigating feature because you do have buildings that kind of wrap the site that help to reflect that noise away from the. Because you do have buildings that kind of wrap the site that help to reflect that noise away from the Tanker Verde casitas. Which are the rental casitas. It's one of the original rental casita projects then that have been built in on the east side. And then to the north where you see the big vacant parcel, that's actually had been recently rezoned for an apartment community. So both of those partners are part partners parcels, man. The parcel just to the north of the casitas, as well as the larger one that extends all the way out to Bear Canyon is proposed for. Multi-family residential. And so there there is again, this general area is is very commercial in nature. With shops of Bear Path across the street. You got the two shopping centers at the intersection of Catalina Highway. And and this is kind of one of the rare vacant parcels that's tucked in between all of those. And so again, as John mentioned, we are requesting the C two for the the car wash site. This is a. Closer up view of the site. So you can kind of see the context and see how that storage very much just wraps around our north and our west boundary. But it's just one point three nine acres. And fairly fairly disturbed, even though it's not been developed before, just from human activity. So the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan again calls for commercial. The use is a hundred percent allowed. As long as you meet those implementation techniques. So again, I'm not going to belabor it because John did go through it. In considerable amount of detail, but the implementation techniques are very much designed to protect. Surrounding residential uses and to make sure that it is appropriate and buffered in the area. And then also they talk a lot about design and and how it fits into this area. And so architecture, the landscape, and as I present some renderings in the site plan, you'll see. How we've worked within those to make sure that we can comply with that. So we of all those eleven implementation techniques. And eleven is part A through G. We meet and we've worked with staff to make sure that we meet all of those except for the one. And that is that last one where it talks about it has to be completely contained within an enclosed roof structure. Except those couple of exceptions that John talked about, the plant nurseries and then the home improvement type of outdoor storage. But as you know, and I'm sure most of you, if not all of you have have used one of these express car wash services. And there's some uses that just don't lend themselves to being internal to a building. Now, the. Well, let me let me talk about that in a minute before I I go on or I'll turn to the site plan and talk about some of those uses that. Would not meet this indoor exception. But again, I just wanted to emphasize that we have written this amendment to this exception to the section G. To apply only to the site. So it doesn't set a precedent for the rest of Bear Canyon. And only for this use. So if something for some reason this didn't come through or go through as planned, then. It that implementation technique would still hold to any other use besides an express car wash. And I just jumped right in and I didn't introduce the rest of my team here. I've got Adam Call, who is. Working on this with me at the Planning Center. And then I have four folks here from from Mr. Car Wash. So if there are any particular. Questions of them, they're here as a resource as well. I've got Avanthu Bardwell, Anne Graham Bergen, Rohit Tawar. And James Throck Morton with me. So sorry about that, guys. I just jumped right into. So this is the site plan, as John showed you. And again, we meet all those implementation techniques of of moving the site back from the scenic corridor. You know, Tanker Verde is an arterial, but it's also scenic arterial. So there's some extra standards there. And then the Bear Canyon. Neighborhood plan requires that setback. So that red line that you see about going right through the middle of the site to the east-west, that is a hundred feet. So we actually exceed that. Again, all the car wash uses are are going to be the washing itself uses are in that self-service car wash labeled. White building that is the tunnel that you go through. So the uses that we're asking for for the exception. Or that we are requesting the exception for, if we will, are the. In the front of the building, you have the bays where people or parking spaces where people can go in and have the self-service vacuums. And so so those are basically a little bit wider than normal parking spaces. You pull in, you get to do your vacuum and then you can come around. And then you go to the back of the building and that is where the pay kiosk is. And that's that light blue section where you come in, you pay. And then you go back around again and you go through the car wash and back out. Then we do have some of the vacuum equipment that you see just at the southeast or southwest corner of the building there. And so so some of those, like I said, it just doesn't lend itself well to to put. The self-serve vacuum operations within an enclosed structure. So we're asking for that exception. But in exchange for that, we are proposing. Some additional landscaping and some additional setbacks that will help mitigate that, both the noise as well as the visual of that. And so that. The. I always read this thing doesn't work on the screen, does it? The. Kind of darker green or the more pea-green kind of area. That is the thirty-foot natural strip that's required for the scenic corridor. And so that that again, we'll have all the vegetation that's there right now and will remain ungraded. And then after that, we have a twenty-four-foot landscape buffer and between right at that thirty-foot line, there is going to be a fencing as well, decorative fencing. One of the things that we've been working with Councilmember Cunningham's office on in for this project and some of the other ones in the Tanker Verde Valley. Is to try to start doing an equestrian theme. It's something that he would like to see as far as. Any new developments coming in. So we have worked up. Something that's in that vein as far as trying to have that little bit of a equestrian feel, the feel that you are arriving in a in the Tanker Verde Valley and starting that really with this project and a few other ones. To give that kind of cohesive design. So this is a rendering of the site and you can see again. The gravel area with the little sparse vegetation. It's actually a little bit thicker than that when you go out there in real life, but the rendering is just showing a little bit of the natural vegetation that's there. That's that thirty feet. You go to the fence and the wall and the entry little features there. That is right at that thirty-foot line. And then you've got the twenty-four foot of landscaping and then you have the bays. And so really all you see of that area, the outdoor, that the hoses that come down. And and then again, the building is set back well over that hundred feet. One of the other setbacks that is required to, by the way, is is a three hundred and fifty-foot, I believe, setback from any lower-density residential area. And because of that rezoning that just occurred to the north, we don't really have any three hundred and fifty-foot or any. Lower-density or even medium-density residential. We just have the one residential. Rental community to the east. But if you see that dotted red line, that's like an arc across there. That's actually the setback even from that one piece that's since been rezoned. So we're considerably outside of that radius as well. But again, the rendering and then we have a little bit of an oblique rendering of it. It gives you a better idea and gives you that peek into. That area that would be the outdoor vacuum bays as well as the just the depth of that setback and and. How that works. And then this is just a rendering. So you can kind of see the design that we showed you within that rendering. We have the rusted steel rail fence that kind of emulates a wood rail fence that you see in an equestrian area, but a lot. Lot sturdier and going to keep the maintenance is going to be a lot lower. And then some slum block columns to really evoke that ranchy and horsey kind of feel. We did, as as John mentioned, we had the combined neighborhood meeting for the both the rezoning and the plan amendment and had that one person. Stop in and express their support and but we also reached out. Alexei Walle, my colleague, reached out to the who is now the former president of Lake Castle Rock, Tom Adang. I think he's since since that meeting has stepped down and been replaced, but. He is and then also the owner of Bandolero Ranch, which is. Go back to my aerial real quick. Bandolero is toward the very far left corner of the site. That's the large equine facility with the big. Covered arena. And so they're they're actually very in favor of this equine district as well. And both of those expressed support of the project. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have of me or Mr. Car Wash.
Chair Martin.
Short recess.
Sure, we can have a recess.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we're back.
We're back.
Um, question? Chair or Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I do have some questions. Looking through the site analysis, trying to understand, you know, how the building works. Here's that the building is three to six and a half feet higher than the street. Which. Will affect, you know. What you see, I guess the first thing was, was there any consideration putting the vacuums behind the building? So that they were screened from the street.
Chair Ortiz Pino, Commissioner Martin. I think that the the way that this situation is and where the the way the site is because. Most of the activity where where people are coming and going with the the cars coming around. The way the way that the circulation flows, it just works better to have it coming in that way and coming back out that way. They want. I'm not describing this very well, but when you come in, that's your first stop is the the vacuums, right? So you would have to be coming in and going past the pay station. To get around the back to be able to do that. So flipping it while on the surface sounds like it might be pretty easy. You have that controlled entry. Once you get. Into where the pay station is and you're coming around to the tunnel, that you have to have that sequencing of events. And so flipping it back around, you you can't pass through, you'd have to pass through that pay area to be able to get to the vacuums. Yeah, maybe you can do a better job. Thank you.
Sorry. The the main the main reason was is if we put the vacuums in the back, then the building would be in front of that hundred-foot setback.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, good point.
It looked like the building could move twenty or twenty-five feet north and so.
It could. It it could, but yeah, with two rows of vacuums. So if those are at eighteen, that's thirty-six plus a thirty-foot drive aisle. That's a sixty-six foot moving forward sixty-six feet. Which would then. Put us inside that hundred-foot setback.
Okay, thanks. In the site analysis says there's a ten-foot tall vacuum canopies on page forty-one. But the exhibits didn't show any canopies, the illustrative exhibits. Like that should be part of the. What we're looking at as far as the screening requirements.
Yes, Commissioner, can can we have the site plan back up? Is that possible? Okay.
I'm talking about the exhibits. The perspectives don't show canopies over the vacuums.
Oh, okay. So as far as.
Those exhibits don't.
Okay.
Canopies. You know, they're ten feet tall. So that's. Would be helpful understanding the screening. So there's no canopy shown on that exhibit.
Right. And I believe what we were aiming to do is to try to keep that open feel so that it did not have the the structures in there again.
But I mean, it just it says in the site analysis that there's canopies.
Good evening, everyone. Which canopies are you referring to?
It says.
Oh.
Ten-foot tall vacuum canopies.
I think that that was an older report. There are no canopies over the vacuums.
Okay, well, I was just looking at the site analysis that was given to us.
That might just be an error, but there are no canopies over the the vacuums.
Okay. So, you know, it's it says it should be the usage should be screened. And I looked up the definition of screen and it says an opaque barrier. I only see two trees along the vacuum canopies and I know it talks about four-foot fence and. Large desert vegetation, but I don't I don't think that's going to provide screening that's even in your. Written into your exception. So I'm a little concerned about. Your exception says the uses will be screened from the adjacent streets. So.
Okay, we can look at that between now and and the the public hearing and see if there's a possibility to add other vegetation in there. The the shrubs and the the plants that we are proposing in there should grow considerably higher than that fence and and be able to, but we can look at. We can look at that between now and the and the public hearing.
And we are working very closely with the city on landscaping. So we we're definitely making every effort to make sure we have that screening.
Okay, it's just the exhibits you show don't.
These are very preliminary renderings, but we just wanted to give you an idea of what it'll look like. But the the vegetation, we're definitely gonna. Work with the city on that one.
So this may be related to your rezoning or. But it looked like on your grading plan, you had retention basin in the thirty-foot natural buffer, which. And you only have four fourteen fourteen hundred square feet of disturbance within that buffer according to the site analysis. So. I don't think that grading is allowed in the thirty-foot natural area.
Commissioner Martin. I'd like to just remind the commission that our purview is regarding the plan amendment. The zoning examiner will be going over all of the details of that in their hearing for the rezoning.
Okay, I just wanted to point out something that I saw.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Martin.
What are the hours of the facility?
They are, excuse me. Seven AM to seven PM. Yeah, and in Commissioner McKenzie, I I wanted to actually mention that because you'd asked about noise and that is one of the mitigating features that we won't have. And you know, opening hours late, like some of the self-source car washes that you do see twenty-four hours. And the other mitigating factor of that is most of the noise of a car wash is coming from that. Tunnel where the cars go through and the way that it's situated is intentional that we have the opening of that is on the east side, pointing toward the Ace Hardware. And that is the direction of the noise. So when you're coming into that is the quieter end of the of that where we are closer to the residences.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the year.
Oh, yes, thank you. So, um, just a comment. As far as the screening that Commissioner Martin mentioned, being someone who. Uses facilities like that, I have a tendency to go to a place where I have. Good sightlines and people have good sightlines to me. I don't know if I I go to a facility like that where I'm behind a block wall screen totally from the street. I don't know if I'd, I'd go to a facility like that where I'm behind a block wall, screened totally from the street. So is this, is this facility's open 24 hours a day?
Commissioner, no, it is at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM are hours of operation.
Oh, okay. All right. Then, then that wouldn't, that, that wouldn't matter. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had one question actually regarding the use. Is it the vacuum bays that is the outdoor use? Or is it the tunnel itself because it's not completely enclosed and that there's a drive-through aspect? What is the aspect that's?
The, the, the use is the, the outdoor vacuums and the motors and everything outside. That's the, the outdoor.
That's the aspect of the use?
Correct. That's the aspect of it. Correct.
Thank you. All right. I think it's time that we open it up for public hearing. Not seeing any more questions.
Just a study session. You get it, you get us next month too.
I'll be doing that next time.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you. We will take your comments and we'll be prepared on our next meeting. Appreciate it.
All right. So thanks to the applicant. And if we could have a motion to set this for a public hearing?
Sure. I motion that we set Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan, changing community, a commercial self-serve car wash amendment on their thing. Public hearing to be set on April 17th, 2024.
A second. Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who says nay or not in favor, say nay. Hearing none. The ayes have it and we can schedule this to public hearing for April 17th. All right. Item six, PDSD staff announcements.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. We have a couple announcements of things we just want to keep you guys up to date on in terms of PDSD activities and projects. One, I think we mentioned previously that we're currently updating our development review fees. So these are the fees that apply to all permits and development applications, including rezonings, plan amendments, et cetera. That has been going through public review for the past several months after mayor and council issued a notice of the intent to raise fees. And that will go to a public hearing with mayor and council on April 9th. Additionally, we are also updating our outdoor lighting code right now. That's not a code that comes to the planning commission, but I wanted to make you aware of it since it's a little bit related or adjacent to your purview. The Outdoor Lighting Code Committee, which is a joint committee between the city and Pima County, have been working on updates to that code for over a year now and have issued a revised or a draft, a final draft of that outdoor lighting code. And that will go to review by the committee later in April, most likely. Just, you know, in Pima County, that does actually go to their planning commission, not in the city. It will just go straight to mayor and council after review by the Outdoor Lighting Code Committee. And then we continue to work on Plan Tucson, the update to our general plan. Our working groups are meeting this month. We have a number of working group meetings and then there'll be a community forum with all of the working groups together, working together later in April. So I know some of you have been attending those. We really appreciate your participation in developing policy and the update for our general plan. Question?
So I tried to do the online commenting, you know, read the affordable housing section. The exhibits are too small to read on the computer. And I sent an email to staff saying that it's black text on gray background. And it's fine, the first few slides are okay. But whatever those exhibits they have, you know, or I can't read them. So, you know, I don't know. So it's hard to do the online comments to the goals and, and so.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. So that is the draft policies related to housing for the general plan that you were trying to review online. We'll see what we can do to update the format so that it's more readable.
We went through it with the, you know, the committee and they said to work on it online. You could add additional comments, but the slides for the specific goals were too small. And I don't know. You know, everything else was scaled the earlier slides, so I don't know how to scale it up or, or so.
Thank you for mentioning that. Appreciate it.
So I, I just have a quick question. And hopefully, maybe Dan, you can answer this. I've noticed that for probably the last four or so meetings, it seems as though we've been scraping by with quorum. And I, I was just wondering, do we have members that are routinely missing? And if so, what do our bylaws say about those members that might be unexcused for several meetings in a row?
Yeah, Commissioner Lambo, actually, there is one member who is absent. If you, it's essentially you have to make 40% of a meetings within a calendar year or you can't be absent for four meetings in a row. And we have a commissioner that has missed four in a row in Ward Six. So we'll be reaching out to Ward Six in order to get another commissioner appointed there. We have one other opening related to that as well that will, will work on getting additional people. So yeah, I know we have had some kind of issues for the last few meetings related to this, but we're working on making sure that there is a full planning commission to make sure that there aren't any quorum issues.
Can I ask just one? I always like these, this concept of 360 feedback, but, you know, are we as a commission meeting your needs, you know, and the kinds of questions that we're asking? And, you know, the responses and blah, blah, just curious.
Commissioner Canty, your feedback is very valuable to applicants and to staff. I will just say, because we actually just did some training last week for one of our boards, the Historic Advisory Boards, we have at times done training for the planning commission. We haven't done that in several years, probably since maybe before COVID. Maybe we did some mini-training. Did we last year? Okay. And sometimes that's more procedural things, you know, how to make a motion, things like that. But also we could do a training that is more related to, you know, some of the policies or plans that are related to the policymaking or recommendations that you're making as a commission. We've also tried to do some informational items when there have been relevant plans that other departments are working on, like our transportation plan, housing plan, et cetera. So we're always happy to bring those things to you so that you feel that you have the information, knowledge, resources that you need to make informed decisions, informed questions to staff. So we're very open to that type of training if you would like that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm kind of of the opinion of no question is a bad question. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if I'm asking questions that are like too basic for what your purposes are or whatever. But so I just thought I'd ask. And I'd be happy to take some training and, you know.
Thank you.
I really like turning on this microphone. And I just now noticed that there is a note here saying that you need to be very close to it. So just a quick comment. So I was a planner in New York for several years. New York State actually requires members of boards, commissions and committees, especially planning and zoning, to attend at least eight hours of training every two years. So if you want to retain your seat on a, on a planning zoning or a planning commission, you have to have eight hours of, of training. I know that Arizona doesn't require that. That said though, it would be great, you know, any training that you wanted to put together, that would be, I'd be all for it.
So saying that, the APA convention is going to be in Tucson?
Yeah.
In September, I don't.
September.
So there are study sessions on boards and commissions, so.
That's a great point, Commissioner Martin. Thank you for sharing that. And we'll definitely bring more information about the Planning Association Conference to the commission as we get closer. Because we would definitely encourage folks to attend. And I believe there are some sessions geared towards planning commission members. Yeah.
And a discount.
And you get the city attorney as your leading the session.
Who went last year? Johansson? I presented a session on built-for-rent housing. I'm going to do it again this year. So just pointing out, if anybody wants to stop by.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Feature agenda items?
Yeah, sure. Members of the commission. So we have one item that is the item you voted on tonight and heard, the Bear Canyon Neighborhood Plan Amendment. We have a public hearing coming on April 17th, 2024. Yeah.
Excellent. I would, now I'd call the audience, seeing no audience. I'm going to go ahead and finish that one. Is there anybody online that would like to have a call? All right. Hearing none, I'd like to call for a motion to end the session. To adjourn?
I call to end the session.
My second.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, and thank you for joining online.
Yep, thanks, everyone.